Report on operations of business service divisions. It's good to see you tonight. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Norman. And just kind of piggyback on what Dr. Gloria had said. One of the things Mr. Zeta brought up in his speech at the barbecue was that his facilities team had put in over nine thousand hours over this summer to deep clean and get all the projects done, and they're not done yet. If you go around the site, you can still there frantically working, but they're doing a great job. So great job, Ryan, and always appreciate the work they do. Another thing that we did have last week is our kickoff with Green Schools National Network, our first advent at putting our task force together. Dr. Tim Baird was on hand to present and facilitate the two hour workshop slash meeting. It's very successful, a lot of really good engagement with our district leadership, including the site principals and the assistant principals and their administrative assistants. Really spent a lot of time on identifying what the key impact systems were, assessing where we were as a leadership group, what our expectations were, where we thought we were and where we thought we could be, and so that we can use that information going forward, develop our plan. Also addressing and noting the fact that we want to, we want to have some immediate wins. We want some work that we can acknowledge that give our team success moving forward so that we can also engage in those long term projects and implementation of our sustainability program as well. So really looking forward to that work and ready for the new school year. I'm very excited. So thank you.
Thank you for that exciting report. Next is Mr. Colin, and he's reporting on operations of human resource department. It's good to see you this evening. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, President Norman. It's it's been a whirlwind of a summer with unprecedented hiring in the in human resources since May. We've onboarded over fifty new staff members, which amounts to about fifteen percent turnover, mostly due to the golden handshake, but there's been just a substantial amount. So my team, you know, it's been they've been working, working their tails off. So but it's it's all good because by adding new enthusiastic and invigorating new employees, the L W S C family, it just it it only makes us better here in Laguna. So again, yes, special thanks to my team, Jennifer D'Antio, Ashley Cole and Kelly Murda for all their work to get us to where we are today. And there's a lot more to come in the coming weeks. We continue to still have some finalizing of staffing, but we're excited for the school year to kick off and and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And thanks for all the staffing. I know that's been hard and busy. Next is Dr. Mayberry. He's reporting the operations of instructional services department. It's good to see you this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, just wanted to say we were almost wrapping up a lot of staff professional development, although next week might be the biggest week. But we've had a lot of teachers in here doing a lot of training, science teachers, math teachers, P E teachers, to name a few. Counselors were in here for almost a whole week planning out third year. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. This week, we had a three day institute for around unit design. We had almost twenty percent of our teachers come here during the summer to do that with our instructional coaches. So it was really, really exciting, the first cohort to do that. We'll have another one in the fall and the spring. But then next week, as Mr. Collins said, we have a lot of new staff. So we have a new staff institute that's on Monday all day long for all of our new staff to help them understand the culture around our district, practices, technology, learning tools. That's for certified and classified staff. Monday, we've got another, a class, a lot of classified staff returns. So we have, I believe it's fifteen to twenty plus sessions on that day. And then Thursday, believe it or not, we have a conference style for all the whole district. And there's at least sixty, last time I checked, different sessions going on throughout the day for all the staff, for all of our staff. So I'm really excited to have that for staff. And then, of course, the kids returning on August twenty second, a week from Monday is super, super exciting. And especially exciting that we're having a new TK classroom up at top of the world that starts as well. So, thank you.
That was an exciting report as well. Board members, are there any comments for any of those reports? And then I think that we missed, go ahead. And I, and we left you off the agenda, and I'm so sorry. I didn't know you guys had reports. And so would you like to go ahead and give your report for C S E A? And you have to tell me how to pronounce your last name properly. I don't want to slaughter.
Thank you, President Norman and board. I'm Thesa Zuziak. I am the incoming president for C S E A. So forgive me if I look a little deer in the headlights. It's a little overwhelming, but I'm really happy to be here. I just wanted to give a shout out to Ryan and his team, Dothe, and our maintenance staff for all the work they did that. I was with them yesterday, and it was amazing to see everything they've done. I also, we just attended Rich Carey and I from top of the world, one of the maintenance guys up there. We were at C S E A conference in Las Vegas for our five day annual conference, and I got to sit down with our state president and our regional rep and our executive board rep and spend a lot of time going over moving us forward. And I'm happy to say our chapter one thirty-one here is in very good shape. We will have a full executive board, and I've had a lot of people step up to fill a lot of vacancies. So I'm really excited because we're, we will be moving forward in a really positive manner. And also at the conference, we got to hear from Governor Newsom and some other state legislatures, and also from our C S E A legislatures and the eight legislative bills that they helped push through and also help with the critical funding that we need for busing and food services and special ed and other areas. So they were very busy during this COVID time working with Sacramento. So I'm happy to be here and be part of this. So, thank you.
We're happy to have you here, and thank you for that report. And sorry, you don't have, just making sure. Okay. Okay. And then this takes us to six C education elements equity update. Kristen Hall, still going by, yes, is reporting. Congratulations, and it's good to see you. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you so much, Board of Education, Laguna Beach Leadership and Community. I'm so happy to be here again. Giving another update on the equity and inclusion work. Last time I was here was in March. Today, I'm going to share with you some highlights from our annual impact report. I'm really focusing on the work in the partnership last school year. So really excited to share with you some of that impact at the the school level and community level. For those of you who do not, who are not familiar with education elements, we are a national consultancy. We work across all fifty states, supporting school districts and really to shifting their classrooms, schools, and their districts, central offices to support more student centered equitable learning. And that can look a lot of different ways depending on the focus of our projects. You'll see equity is at the center there, but you'll see some other service lines that we support with districts across the country and including strategic planning, blended and personalized learning, teacher recruitment and retention, as we know, that's a very pressing issue right now across the country, and teams and culture. So with our work with Laguna Beach, we really focus centrally on equity, bringing in kind of other components from some of our other services as well. You'll see the methodology from last year here, four phases of work really that we focused on throughout the course of last school year, starting with some leadership learning, building shared language, shared sort of vision and understanding around this work, really getting clear on some definitions that were very Laguna centric. What does educational equity mean for us in Laguna? As we think about our students and our community, we then moved into the listening and learning phase, which involved a lot of engagement with the community, which included student engagement, our staff and parents and other community members. We talked to a lot of students. I'm going to highlight some numbers here so you can see kind of how, what that engagement looked like and and look at sort of the impact that that had. But that helped us to really hone our focus around a couple strategic areas where we decided with leadership in Laguna Beach would have impact on students and really start to help move the needle in some of the areas that we found through those surveys and focus groups. There were some opportunities within Laguna Beach. We then moved into strategy and design, and this is when we started working a lot with principals as well, sort of at the school level, thinking about their campus and how this translates, those findings from listening and learning translate to their school communities and what that means for them and how they can bring that work forward in a way that's going to be specific to the different campuses and the different developmental needs of students as well, thinking about elementary, middle school and high school. And with that came some capacity building. So we had design teams at each school. We worked, we had professional learning sessions with them. They developed really incredible goals and action plans and started to build some capacity around the work at each school level. And I'll share with you those goals and action plans as well tonight. On top of all of that, it's, it's, you know, ongoing sort of monitoring and iteration of this work. As we know, this work is constantly evolving. We have supported Laguna Beach community and responding to issues as they have come up within the community as well. And we also have been working with, you know, closely with administrators. Our steering team has been a really critical driver of this work, which includes members of Laguna Beach community, school leadership, teachers, students, and has been a really critical piece of this work as well as the superintendent's leadership team as well. So this is probably very hard to see for you in the audience, but I know board members, you have this in front of you. This is sort of a double click into each of these phases. So you can see what specifically happened in each of these phases, and you'll see there's a lot there. So this really is a high level sort of thirty thousand foot view on all of the touch points that we had to kind of move us along with this work. You'll see a good mix of professional learning sessions, one on one support and coaching, a good mix of, you know, community engagement, and then school level work. Really trying to keep this work comprehensive and make sure that we are involving all stakeholders throughout the process. I will not read each of these bullets, but you are welcome to. The next slide here again gives a little bit more about kind of the impact and a summary of all of the work we did throughout the course of the year. I know my team was really excited when we stepped back and we got to look through all of the archives and all of the meeting notes and all the, you know, slide decks prepared and really start to quantify this. And, you know, you'll see that there was a lot of work that happened in our partnership. Learning at all levels. We had, you know, our school based sessions, sessions with school leaders and and design teams. We had a lot of hours we spent with our, with the Laguna Beach leadership team. And seventy-six days across this last school year that we connected with the Laguna Beach team. You'll also see sort of the cohort learning experience in the middle there is is really focused on our steering team. We had twenty-three participants who were active throughout last year. We had eleven interactive sessions with the steering team, including some in person sessions and about thirty hours spent with the steering team last year. Ninety-seven percent of steering team members gave pretty rave reviews and had an excellent or good experience with us. And then you'll see some of our metrics there from the listening and learning tour, which was twenty-five days. Spent doing that engagement. So a lot of time really deeply connecting with the community, connecting with students, with teachers across Laguna Beach. We had sixteen staff members who administered surveys. We had forty hours spent analyzing. So a lot of kind of backend analysis of the data as well. We had six different consultants from our team step in and support the work and ten different readout sessions that we conducted at the school level, some virtually, some with a steering team, et cetera. So that's a quick summary of some of our metrics. The next slide here goes a little bit deeper. You'll see a hundred percent of the leaders across Laguna Beach were involved in this work, engaged throughout the way. Some of the parent and guardian involvement you'll see there with our survey and the community readout reports or the community readout sessions. We also have this middle session section here, which gives an overview of sort of the leaders who were involved throughout the way. The coaching calls that we had with school leaders, teachers and staff who participated in some of our sessions. And then parents and guardians who were involved, and that's mostly at Thurston Middle School. Resulting in thirteen action plans, which I'll share those action plans shortly for each school of of sort of what was the outcome of all of that work at the site level and some of the work that they'll be focusing on implementing this year, which we're really excited about. And then the last pink category there is about student voice. We had eighteen student facing workshops, one hundred twenty-three student participants in our interviews and focus groups and the community readout sessions that were for, one of those sessions was just for students and two thousand plus students who participated at the campus level as well. This slide is just a couple quotes from different surveys that we we like to give surveys at the end of our sessions. We just grabbed some quotes that we thought were kind of enlightening and and were good illustrations of the work and the partnership this year. So you can take a second to read them. You know, I always like when they ask for more time, the, I almost think these steering committee meetings could be longer. That's always a good indication to us that we're, we're talking about the right things and we're hitting on topics that are important to people that they want to continue to discuss that they're relevant to their lives. So I'm going to very briefly go through the action plans for each level. The elementary, middle school and high school action plans. I'll start with their SMART goals and then just give you one of those areas of action for them. So you'll see here, we'll start with El Moro and top of the world. Every, each campus, kind of the culmination of our work last year, they really set priorities and and goals around three buckets of work related to equity and inclusion. The first was teaching and learning. The second was culture and behavior, and the third was community and communication, excuse me, and community engagement. So each school will have specific goals related to kind of their campus or the elementaries together for these three areas that we believe are critical to really advancing equity and inclusion in our schools. So you'll see here the elementary goals for teaching and learning, for culture and behavior, and for communication and community engagement. And then I'll do a double click for the elementary school. Looking at their teaching and learning goal. So they have, or sorry, action plan. So for those goal, each of those goals, they have action plans to really bring them to life. So you'll see the teaching and learning action plan here, the component area. I was calling it a bucket. I guess component is a better word. So looking at the component of teaching and learning, they have a challenge statement which was based in data from their, that listening and learning and from continued kind of partnership and work with the their D E I lead team, and then a SMART goal related to specifically teaching and learning. They also have actions, owners, and sort of dates and frequencies of when these things are happening. So we're very excited to continue to be able to support these schools moving into this year to help them to advance these action plans, to learn, to iterate and to continue to evolve this work at their campus level. So you'll see the elementary is really around student agency, really getting to know students and making sure that they're focusing on relationships at the elementary level. At the middle school level, you'll see again, there's the three components in each area. They have a goal. And so for the middle school, we're going to do a double click here on culture and behavior, that second component. And their how might, or their challenge statement, their how might we statement, and then a SMART goal related to that specific component. So you'll see that the middle school also has very specific metrics that they're using to measure these actions. They have clear owners and the date and frequency is clear as well, really focusing on P B I S. Restorative circles, restorative practices, and really behavior and school climate using P L Cs, staff meetings, et cetera. In addition to their community partnerships as well for that culture and behavior piece. And of course, Laguna Beach High School, similarly, they have the three components, teaching and learning, culture and behavior and communication and community engagement, specific goals for their campus related to each of those components. And, you know, one of the big goals for the high school is really around understanding what practices currently exist and helping to expand and grow those practices that are happening or that are having impact, a positive impact on students. Developing more structures, formal structures around D E I, like the, a committee of students and staff who are meeting regularly. Then I done, using that team to help identify the specific actions at the high school level. Continued communication to bring in all staff to be a part of this work as well. And finally, just wanted to thank you all for your incredible partnership. We are, feel like it's an absolute honor to be doing this work alongside of you all. And and it's just a joy to work with your community and your, your school leaders, teachers and your students. So just thank you very much. And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Board members, comments?
Hi. Like, could you give a more specific maybe lesson plan for how the students, your idea of having like the elementary students feel more safe and include included?
I can answer that. So they're, they're not, they're not providing specific lesson plans or curriculum at all.
We are.
Talked about, like, they're here to help support our leadership and and help them, guide them and strategic planning. They don't, they're just here. Sometimes professional learning, sometimes strategic planning.
Okay.
So that the schools develop these actions that they help carry through, and they obviously have that experience. So there's nothing that they're doing related to like a less specific lesson plan or anything like that.
Yeah, one thing that we would do is we'd have teachers maybe inventory their current practices and think about, okay, if they're trying to, they're having a challenge with students' sense of belonging in their classroom because the data is telling them that maybe students or a couple subgroups of students don't feel a sense of belonging, then they can look at their current practices of, okay, what am I doing to promote belonging and where might be some opportunities or gaps that I could try a new strategy or bring some new thing. And we're not coming in with like a lesson plan or curriculum. It's more around sort of instructional strategies and taking kind of stock and inventory of current practices and thinking about what are new opportunities or new practices that they can integrate to better meet those needs of students and promote that sense of belonging amongst all student subgroups and and all of their staff as well.
And then I, I know you did surveys last year, and I went to hear a couple of this, of your talks about the student surveys. And then I know you also did a staff survey that we were not shown the staff survey, and I was told that it was because the population you chose was too small. And so for privacy reasons, you might be able to tell which people had said what. So my question to you, I mean, this is, this is what you do is data and surveys. Why did you do a survey that was too small that we couldn't really? Survey. It was parents who were recommended by the high school, by the school principals, not random. Why was it like that? I mean, why, why did we, you know, I'm looking at, why did we pay a lot of money and a lot of time for surveys we can't even see and that we can't use?
Yeah. So the survey data actually went out to all staff and all parents. So the focus group data, we do have a report and summary for parents and for staff. I can reshare if that would be helpful, but we, we definitely have, we had enough staff participants and parent participants to be able to be able to share that data. So I'm happy to share that with you.
I, yeah, I, I've asked for it probably three times and was told it could not be shared because it was.
That's not accurate. We didn't share that data with you. What the survey results, specifically the breakdown, we couldn't share with you for the identifiable focus group, but we have shared multiple times with the board.
I meant when people were interviewed.
Right. That's the data that was identifiable, but we didn't theme it and provided you with that information. We have multiple times.
I didn't see the information.
I can share it with you.
Was provided with the individual, when they met with people individually, I didn't see the answers from those people.
Right. We themed it because, as we mentioned, if by providing the specific responses, it would be identifiable. So, yes.
So my question is, why did we do something that was?
The individual responses were not what is.
Was it because the responses were negative?
Not at all. Not at all. It was simply, we themed it, which is what you would do when you gather data, was you put it in the themes. Not at all, not at all. It was simply, we themed it, which is what you would do when you gather data, was you put it in the themes and buckets. And that's so they, we themed it based off of the total responses and provided that to the board members. So it's been provided to all of you more than once, but I'm happy to share it again.
Well, I wanted to see the specific responses from people that were interviewed.
Again, I I can't provide that because it's identifiable, so.
That's my point. We paid for something that isn't helping us and you can't provide.
It is helping us.
Doing that again.
It is helping.
Okay.
Just just best practices and qualitative data as you gather data, but you never want the people who are giving you specific stories. Particularly when it's related to something um that could be traumatic experiences, et cetera. You don't want um. To risk the individual being identifiable um to Dr. Valeria's statement. So we. And analyze the data, synthesize it, and then come up with those trends and themes from the data. Um, but sharing that each person's specific data um or responses. Uh, really isn't best practices and qualitative research.
Well, isn't it a way that we get more genuine input?
Right, because if people are. If people have a fear that um they will be exposed for what they say, usually they won't be honest, um, and probably understandably so.
And and sharing with us is sharing with the public. What you share with us is public record.
Right.
You can't share our identities with us. It's inappropriate.
But I didn't see anything that said this many comments were negative, this many were positive. I didn't see anything like that.
A lot of comments related to this type of work are neither negative nor positive. They're they're uh experiential, and so they're uh they're. Uh, they can illustrate a theme or a trend, um, and sometimes those trends can lean more negative or positive, but it's really hard to categorize them. On kind of a black and white continuum.
What about as far as inclusion? Could you categorize them as far as people who felt like they weren't being included?
Yeah, absolutely. And that, those are the themes that came out, where we're pretty clear about uh different groups of people or different experiences people might have had. That um led to them not feeling included, and there was a lot of overwhelmingly so people who do feel included, and we did also summarize those trends as well.
Okay, well, it would be nice to see that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, Dr. Valori can share it again. Thank you. Okay, this moves us to seven eight. Were there other comments or questions? Oh, yes, sure. Go ahead. Sorry.
None. There it is. I just wanted to say that I hope this information, this report, this we. The work that our site principals have done is really showing how this will move forward and actually impact. The campuses and the students and the school year going forward. So it took a long time to get to this, but I think it's really important to emphasize. You mentioned it. A couple of times that it's personalized to our district, because when we started, there was maybe a more narrow focus. Which then from the input from um steering committee members, which is very inclusive group, really. Brought it to the front that we needed to include a lot more types of students. The, so that we can have an equitable education for all of them. So it really changed, and I think it's. Sometimes when you bring consultants in, they have their own idea what they're going to do, rather than in this case with Ed Elements. They, it was really guided by our people, the people in this community. And so it, I think the end result is probably very different than what anyone thought it would be at the at the outset. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, Kristen, I just wanted to add. Looking ahead, I had some questions about what we would expect for twenty two, twenty three, based on the work and the investment that the board had supported last year. And I appreciate the brevity that you put in the presentation you just gave on some excerpts of the action plans. But I wanted to share with the fellow board, I did read all twenty pages of the twenty two, twenty three action plans, and they're fairly impressive. So um while you guys aren't offering specific curriculum or specific lessons. The work that each of our sites at elementary, middle, and high school has done to say this is what we're going to do this year and who's gonna do it. And how is it gonna get done is um really testament to all of the work that we did this past year. So. I was fairly impressed by that, and I thought um it made me excited about what we'll see this year, and many of the things that I. Was hoping would happen, like a review of maybe harmful practices or school-wide practices that might be interfering with our DEI work. Were listed on there, and the team at that site that was gonna do it is identified. And when we write things down like that, they tend to get done, and they get done by the people that can do them best, the leaders at our own sites with their own stakeholders. So. Anyhow, I wanted to um just commend you guys on that, and I look forward to looking at these action plans this time next year and seeing how far we've come.
Yeah, and and the steering team has also been critical in that the steering, the principals each uh presented their action plans to the steering team, got feedback on them. And they'll continue to evolve them along the way. As as you implement work, you always learn more and and new opportunities present themselves, and you have to kind of pivot and and continue to. Um, adjust and evolve the work. So thank you for that, and we're we're very excited about the action plans as well.
And Jen and I were very fortunate to be able to be there watching everyone starting to formulate the ideas and then to see it all laid out and the depth of it. Was quite impressive, and we are so appreciative, and we're appreciative for the fact that you're really helping people shape and refine their practices. With a lens right to the equity and the larger inclusive, that we really appreciate. Thank you.
So about how much time will will this take? How much time will students spend, like say in a week?
Um, there's no set time for students because it's not a, um, it's not like a, again, it's not a curriculum, so it's not. Like a product or a program or a curriculum. Each school is taking a different approach uh based on, again, their their community and their their findings. I can't tell you how much time, if if done well, students, uh, you'll just see that, you know, the increase in your your data around. Student sense of belonging, their happiness, sort of some of those indicators around this work. Um, but there's no set time that students will participate in like a thing, a a set curriculum or experience.
I think that's because it's to be embedded. This is a whole change in how we approach the whole, like the whole school day, so it's, I don't think you can pull it out and stick it in a little box. Just examining practices, examining whatever goes on in the classroom, and then seeing where they can make changes and it. But it would be, to me, that's what it is. It's embedded, and and that will give us the best results.
Yeah, the the board and the district, we weren't looking for a checkoff, right? Like they just did ten minutes or something. Yeah, well beyond it. Any other comment? Thank you again so much.
Thank you.
This moves us to um seven A, which is recognitions. And for the board, we're gonna take a fifteen minute break right after introductions and meet the new student members as well as the new employees, the district, and so. We'll hold our comments in. I I'm saying roughly because I don't. I wanna give space for people. Okay, roughly ten minutes. Then we'll come back fifteen. Okay, Dr. For the floor is yours.
I'd like to introduce uh Nick Poya and Zoe Cutter. They're two new student board reps um this year. Uh, we had probably the largest uh number of student board rep um applications this year, so. Much appreciation to Dr. Allman and his team uh for getting out and um uh in sending that out to the students. Uh, it was a rigorous process. We have uh two former student reps that also sit on the interview panel. Um, and I felt uh um it was a lot of good conversations about what our student reps can provide and. You two um were the two that were selected, so we're excited to have you here. Uh, I think Nick uh wanted to share a few words, so how about?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly recognize my mom for being here tonight. She's been super supportive. She's been super supportive in uh helping me get here, and I just wanted to thank you all for, you know, being here tonight and just say how much of a pleasure it is to be serving on the board this year.
And they they both have, it's perfect timing. They're both going on short vacations before school starts. I'm very jealous, so. They may be having to head out a little early out of our meeting, um, but uh welcome. We look forward to having you. I know the board does as well, and uh. We're definitely gonna see you next week. It's worth the following week, I should say, on the first day of school.
That gives us next to be introductions of the new leadership staff. And um.
Thank you, President Normand. Uh, Nick, well played. That was well done. Nice nicely done. Uh, I'd like if Isaac could please join me. We'll begin by introducing Isaac An. He comes to us with nine years of experience as a licensed school psychologist, having worked previously in Norwalk La Mirada. And Fullerton. In Fullerton, he was a lead school psychologist for the past five years, where he trained and mentored new school psychs. Provided site and district PD and to general and special education staffs. We're very excited to have his expertise here in Laguna. Supporting both El Moro and the high school. So welcome to Isaac. And I I promise all four that there's no speech. We're we're excited with Isaac. So these four introductions are for new members of our leadership team, so it's been a. Like I said, in a busy summer, but very exciting as well. Uh, the next, going by a alphabet of last names, so Brian Carlson. So Brian began his career as a middle school teacher in Mountain View, then transitioned to Anaheim Union High School District where he's been there since nineteen ninety nine. He doesn't look that old, but he he is. Uh, and it's, I'm not used to look up to people either, so it's impressive. Um, during his time in Anaheim, he served as an assistant principal at the middle school level for seven years, um, where he was a. His shoulder was tapped to make the jump to principal, and at that time, his boys were very young. And he chose to be a heavily involved dad instead of becoming a principal, so he was able to really have that balance in life raising his boys. So he came, and then from there, he stepped back into the classroom where he taught reading intervention, CTE courses, and three years as an MTSS lead coordinator. And now those boys are heading off to a next level of their educational chapter. He felt it was time to jump back into the admin role. And uh, we're happy that he landed here in Laguna, bringing his expertise as well, especially with MTSS to help the high school grow in that area. And uh, again, welcome to uh the LB student, LB USD family, Brian. And then uh, Brian DePalmas, can you leave the areas? All right. So Brian, he's our our new uh, actually, due to introductions, of course, we did Isaac's school psychologist. Brian Carlson, new AP at the high school, left that part out of my speech, and then uh Brian DePalmas is going to be um. The manager of the the theater at the high school. So Brian comes to us from Irvine USD where he's been in theater operation since two thousand eight. He was one of only, or one of only four, three or four um of those techs supporting all AV needs and theater needs in the entire district. Uh, Brian has a BA in theater arts with an emphasis in technical theater production and a certificate in applied project management. He has over twenty eight years of experience. In the professional and educational arena, so we're so happy to have Brian part of the LB USD family. Look forward to you transforming the theaters and NPRs at all four sites. And you'll be seeing a lot of Brian since he'll be helping to uh do our live streaming of all the board meetings as well. So with that, welcome Brian, and he goes AKA Dez. All right, last but not least, Daphne Hammer, the new middle school assistant principal at Thurston. So Daphne comes to us from Anaheim Union High School District as well, uh, to be the new assistant principal next to alongside Principal Joe Vidal. Daphne began her career as an elementary teacher, then transitioned to be a middle school counselor. Uh, from there, she served as a. Transferred to over twenty years of site administration experience as an AP and principal at both high school and middle school levels. In her free time, she even adjuncts uh as a professor at UMass Global. Um, so her years of site admin experience. Provide a wealth of of knowledge for the for the TMS team, and we're so happy to have you be part of the family, and Joe can definitely use all the help he can get. So we're we're so thankful you're here, and welcome to Daphne. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. Welcome all four, welcome student members, and um the time is six forty four, and we will take a roughly ten minute break to meet everyone. Okay, great. Uh, we are reconvening at six fifty nine, and we're gonna start at eight A. Fourth quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on eight A?
None received.
Thank you very much. Mr. Collin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normand. Um, there are no complaints for quarter four.
Thank you. This takes us to nine A. Um, approval to award contract to Sodex American LLC for food services, consulting services. And food procurement on a unit cost basis for the twenty twenty two, twenty three fiscal year in amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on nine A?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normand. Um, beginning at the end of the school year last year, we issued a request for proposals for food. A food vendor slash consultant to um replace our existing food vendors for the current year. Um, after that process led by Mr. Zeta, uh, and it's a formal competitive process required by the California Department of Ed. Um, Sedexo came out on top based on the community's recommendation, which included two parents who I'd like to thank for their participation. Because not only did they work with us to the end of the school year, but also into the beginning of summer, uh, to not only be part of the RFP review. But actually sat through calls of uh reference checks with other school districts for these vendors, as well as interview the vendors themselves, and that happened well into July. So they shared some of their summer with us, and that was Shaheen Sheek Sidal from Top of the World. So thank you, Shaheen, and Lauren Black from El El Moro Elementary. Uh, really appreciate their support and work through this. Um, I'll be very, I'll be brief as I summarize. I know we've received a lot of information on this, but. Sodexo will replace our existing food vendors or purchase orders that we have open for the year. Um, it is paid for out of the cafeteria fund, Fund thirteen, and the cost that the proposal came in at is within the budgeted amount. Of Fund thirteen for the existing vendors, which is why there is no anticipated fiscal impact. Uh, one of the benefits that we would receive are, there's there's several benefits to do this, uh, but one of the the primary benefits with Sedexo that we found as a committee. Uh, through the process was their real focus on engagement of both the students and the parents on the development of the menus. And working with our staff to help train and increase the variety and options that we would eventually offer. Um, which has been a goal, and it was a lot of the feedback we received last year, which is why um we feel that this is a great time to award this. Not to mention with the advent of the new universal meal program and having the breakfast. Uh, the the food vendor purchase contracts that we were using were all approaching, if not passing, the bid limit. Um, as it does the bid limit, you have to go through the formal process such as this. Or in the past, as in last year, we used a piggybackable bid from Capistrana Unified for Gold Star Foods. Um, so no matter what, you're gonna have to go through some type of formal process and award. Um, but this was nice because it was a competitive process that we got to organize. Involve our parents in the selection, and then going forward, um, work with them to help tailor our menus. One question that we did receive that I could address from Perry was what does this mean? What are the menus gonna look like? Well, initially, those menus are gonna look similar because we need to get it in Sedexo or the them on on our campuses so that we can start. Identifying and help assess not only the feedback we got from our students and staff on the meals and, but also look at our facilities and our operations and look at potential opportunities for improving there. So it would be some change would occur over time, but it's not something that based on this award tonight, you'd come in and have a completely different menu. That takes time, and we do wanna make that part of the process for the year with our students to make sure that can help. Provide not only the nutritious meals that we're required to, but also um help eliminate food waste by making sure that we put the things out there that they they wanna eat most. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I'd like to thank you for making such a wise choice. Um, in my thirty years of eating uh college food in our cafeterias. So Dexa was the best provider I've ever dealt with. Uh, they started out as a French company, uh, and they focused on small colleges. Uh, and so I'm just delighted that I didn't know they were doing um high-end uh high schools and grade schools. And so I I have real hope that uh we're gonna see some major changes here, uh, but just a wonderful company. And after forty years, we, they had been with uh my last college for, I think, maybe fifty years, and uh they're up for renewal, and so. I just suggested they give us a million dollars as a gift because I needed to redo the the student union, and they. They did not want to lose the contract, so they were very happy to give me a million dollars. So forty years when I'm long dead, I'm hoping that. We'll be able to do the same thing uh from in Sedexo.
I also really wanna thank you for involving parents.
Um, I had two questions. One is, um, if this contract's approved tonight, would we expect to see the committee that included the parent input? Continue and to what extent, either what extent is Sedexo comfortable with, or what extent? Um, you know, would parent input continue, especially since the menus haven't been revised or um revamped yet? So this would be the critical point where parents would engage.
Uh, great question, and that did come up through throughout the entire process is what involvement parents could have, what involvement the students could have. I could tell you that um we talked a lot about the snack committee and the parents involved, especially Top of the World with Shaheen on the committee. Talked through what that could look like in terms of the potential involvement. Now, Sedexo had a lot of experience, and it wasn't always called a snack committee, but it was something very similar. And they were fully aware and recognized that in a community like ours, that that involvement, that engagement was critical for the marketing. So when we talk about the marketing component for Sedexo, it's really about that parent education, student education, as well as the outreach that they do. To help craft those menus and varieties and options that they know we want.
And then, uh, my second question was, we would approve this contract. The vendor would look at the types of foods that we had been serving, the facilities, the knowledge of the existing staff we have. When, when would you anticipate, based on your conversations with them so far, that we might see changes to the menus at one or any of the, or all the sites?
Would anticipate a couple of months.
Couple of months.
Yeah, definitely within the school year for sure. But I think it would take a couple of months of getting the month order in advance as well as doing the assessment on facilities. And I don't think the changes would require facility changes per se. I think they can happen over time, but certainly with the increase of the amount of vendors we would have access to, our variety and options that we have to develop the menus would increase almost immediately.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I didn't see in the contract anything about locally grown or sustainable. Uh, that was something they were offering us up in Atherton, California. So if they could get it in Atherton, I'm sure you should be able to get locally grown down here.
Yes. And that's, that's a very high priority for them as they heard from our committee and our questions based on that, as well as follow-up questions from especially the, the parents that we have on. I mean, that was very important. So yeah.
Is in our contract. I didn't, I didn't see it in, in, in my former contract. I didn't see it in this contract.
So, yeah, and that's a good point. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. This contract is based on, we had to provide our previous menus so that we could get a competitive bid apples to apples on the meals. So that's why it's, that's the only way you could do a comparison. That's why to predict the future menus is hard to do because we know they'll change, but how their change is really gonna depend on the feedback we get over the course of this year.
Hadn't we been doing some locally grown and?
Yes. In fact, um, one of the thing, more creative things that we did, um, even prior to the pandemic was, uh, we get a USDA food allotment cost amount. And one of the things that, um, Deborah Pell was able to do was, uh, basically convert or open up ten thousand dollars of that USDA money that you normally use to buy commodities and be able to use it to purchase fresh local organic produce. And that's something we've been doing for the past at least four or five years.
Now, mentioning Deborah made me think when she would try out some of those things on students, you get the, any idea if this company will take that same approach?
Taste tests are critical, not only for finding out what the students might like, but also you get them to try things they wouldn't normally try and realize they might like it.
I think the, the one thing that we have to recognize is we still need to hire a food service person. So we're in the midst of, of that. So we're, uh, when does that posting close?
It actually is closed and Jeff and I will do screening interviews next week.
So there's a lot of questions. I think that would be directed to that person as well because they'll be helping to lead the work with Sodexo. But I think one thing that's important is in the contract, it actually states that menu development, um, that we will seek student and parent input on menu variation and planning. So that is built into the contract that they'll be fulfilling. So, um, you know, I think we're, we're really looking forward to the opportunity.
Jeff, are we approving the RFP or the actual contract? Cause the contract still isn't attached to the item. But I'm, I'm unclear on, we were waiting for their contract. Like to member Kelly's point on the purchasing local, that would be included if we were requiring them to purchase some percentage local. And maybe we can include that in a future year, once they get in and revise the menus, but I'm, um, like when Dr. Kelly says, that's not in the contract. I just see the RFP, but the, I didn't see the actual contract attached.
I believe the RFP is the actual contract. It's a CD template that's attached behind the RFP.
It is. Okay. So it's a go.
Okay. Now, if you look at page, it says page one is actually contract summary is the title of page of that page. So that's actually the contract number.
Okay. I gotcha. Okay. I see. Thank you, guys. No further questions.
Well, first, thank you, Jeff, for the fidelity on this. On implementing this, thanks for the fidelity and, and, you know, helping out with human resources and, you know, filling in that gap. So, may I have a motion in a second, please? Um, any comments? Anything else? Okay. Ready for a vote? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. No, not till September. Yeah, they're, this is a, this is a dry run. They're just sharing their summer with us. And this is gonna take us to nine B. Approval of the agreement with Emergency Management Safety Partners, Inc. in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on nine A? None received. Thank you. Or nine B, sorry. And, um, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. This, this work with emergency, emergency management safety partners incorporated began, uh, three years ago as we brought then into, helps support the work of our district-wide safety committee. Over the course of that time, they've been instrumental in leading some of our trainings and also more recently introducing our staff, our entire staff to the tabletop exercise method that we did last year. The contract tonight or the proposal that we'd be able to, um, review would allow us to expand on those trainings in a more robust manner so that all the school sites would have access to, uh, expert facilitation of these drills and trainings every month over the course of the year, as well as participation, continued participation with our safety committee and work with, um, refining our plan. Uh, one thing I will say about the total cost is it, historically, we've been able to submit for reimbursement for these services specifically for this company, Emergency Management Safety Partners, Inc. So while I can say I'm, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent confident it would be eligible for reimbursement based on history, I can't guarantee for sure, because we would still have to submit it to our workers comp and, uh, general liability insurance carriers. But like I said, I'm very confident we'll be getting the rebate because it's exactly the safety credit that we, uh, would get reimbursed for. So that'd be happy to take any questions and I look forward and thank you for the support over these years. Uh, this is, they've been instrumental in getting our staff to come a long way in a very short period of time, which is, um, crucial, um, nowadays. So thank you and, uh, really look forward to continuing our work and improving, uh, the safety for our staff and, and kids.
Thank you. I know that's one of our top goals is to keep our students safe. And this is definitely helps with that.
Any other questions? May I have a motion? Thank you. Any comments? Right about.
How will we share information with parents of what we're doing and training our staff to reassure them?
That's a good question. I think one of the primary sources would be the work through our safety committee because we invite our parents, uh, staff, our parents from every school site to be part of that with us. But as our, our school sites do these drills themselves and we facilitate them throughout the year, I would imagine that would be fairly exciting because remember this is above and beyond what we've done in the past and this is a new method and, and it's something that we know that professional, uh, first responders are using to better themselves. So if it's good enough for them, it's gonna be good enough for us and, and, um, I certainly bring that back to the sites. I think it would be something we should advertise, um, because it's a lot of great work.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second? Oh, here I did. Oh, I'm so sorry. We're in discussion. Okay. Um, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero to approve the agreement with Emergency Management Safety Partners. This brings us to ten A, approval of the resolution number twenty-one eleven. Assignment of instructional coaches per California Title Five, Section Eight zero zero two zero point four subsection B. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment on ten A?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. So again, this resolution is a requirement of CalSAS, which reviews courses and credentials held from data submitted through the CalPads to ensure all positions are filled with highly qualified teachers. Uh, the district must adopt a resolution for teachers serving as staff developers for specific subject matters so they can have their expertise verified and approved by the local governing board. So the following is a breakdown of the positions that need, um, approval tonight. For our instructional coaches or, you know, one per elementary site, since they're acting as peer mentors, they need their expertise verified. And then for the computer science, um, TOSA, VAPATOSA and math intervention, they're included because in the eyes of, uh, CalSAS, they should have single subject credentials in the areas that they're supporting in versus the multiple subject credentials, which they all have. So of course, interestingly enough, though, you can have a multiple subject credential and teach at every single grade level in an elementary school. And to, to be a reading intervention teacher, you, 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 all you need is multiple subject. For the math, they, to be in compliance, they, 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 they want the board to go through this measure or have a, a, a single subject math. So quite interesting, but just knowing that all staff being recommended have interviewed for their positions and were deemed excellent candidates who met the qualifications for their, for their positions. As we've shared previously, some were filled with interested internal candidates. And while the positions at El Moro were filled externally due to a lack of interest, internal interest. So all hires, follow the same rigorous interview process with current site admin, uh, current certified and classified site staff as part of the panels who recommended the final candidates for their respective positions. The individuals in these roles continue to be evaluated by the site administrators yearly to ensure they continue to meet the district's expectations. So we asked the board for its approval of this annual resolution.
Members? All in favor? Oh, resolution.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly? Member Vickers? President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero to approve the resolution number twenty-two eleven. Next is ten B, approval of the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Clerk Osborne, have you received any blue card, blue public comment cards?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. Uh, again, this is an annual occurrence. So in reviewing the master schedules at the secondary schools, it was determined that designated teachers will need a limited term, uh, assignment permit. The declaration of need for fully qualified educators fulfills this need for a one-year period until the teachers complete the authorization or credential requirements. This declaration must be approved on a regularly scheduled public meeting before the certificates are issued for the certificate staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So to clarify, just can give some backstory on this. Um, so for the industry and technology education, that is needed due to our new, um, ELA drama teacher, lacking a CTE credential. So this individual, so the, the theater component of the drama is a CTE pathway. And it used to be that if you had an ELA credential that you could also teach drama, uh, starting in January twenty-twenty-two, you have to hold a drama credential and an English credential. And because typically those individuals are teaching both those courses. So we're working through that other piece as well. She's gonna, you know, walk out the door with probably three credentials at the end of the day. So we're, we're helping to support that. And then she is, she has began the program this fall. One of the special education limited assignments is for a current, um, teacher who's, uh, completing, uh, courses during her autism authorization that should be done by April. Uh, the dance is due to, um, a leave of absence that'll be happening this year. With, uh, with our dance program. And again, like I shared, starting in January twenty-twenty-two, it's now required that you have a dance credential in addition to a PE credential. It used to be a PE credential allowed you to teach dance. Now they, they, they want an authorization or a, a, a second credential. Um, so we're working through that piece. And for ELA, they're now, we, we talked about the theater and the, um, other piece. So the remaining areas are listed as, as a need, math, all high school sciences and one special education. Uh, just because we've had needs in that area in the past and just to kind of have them just in case. If we do have, you know, a step, a step ever go out and there's a long-term sub needed, this will allow us not to have to come back to the board in the middle of the year before we do the recruitment. So this is just kind of a, just in case. So the staff requests the board's approval of the declaration, declaration of need.
And Mr. Collin, if that need happened, you would just inform the board during that update that you're, you're hiring.
Yeah, we would, I would, in a weekly update, I would share that just to, yeah, if it's beyond the ones that we, that we know of, absolutely.
Any questions?
Mr. Conlon, just to confirm, so for the sciences, biological sciences, chemistry, physics, geosciences, those have the properly credentialed teachers currently on staff teaching. However, should something unforeseen happen to one of those staff members necessitating a long-term sub, this is a backup.
Yes, it's a, it's a hope it never has to happen, but yes, currently, all the, all the, all those are taught by, are all permanent staff members have to have the proper credentials based on what, what courses they're teaching.
And that includes math as well.
That's correct.
Sciences and math.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Map a motion? Okay. Any comments? Ready to vote? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Motion carries five zero to approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And now we're ten C, approval of independent contractor agreement with Stacy DBA, the school well to facilitate mindfulness and yoga instruction, professional development and staff wellness during the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year in amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand dollars. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on this?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, the floor is yours again.
Yes, thank you. Um, so this is, I think maybe the third or fourth year that we've been partnering with, with Stacy. So this is kind of a, uh, this item lives between instructional services and, and human resources. You know, a lot of the, uh, the costs is, is, is from the instructional service, services lens where it's supporting students and, and supplementing the instruction, the yoga, the yoga instruction at the, at the high school level. But we, last year, we, we tapped into, um, we have wellness dollars that are given to us from our, uh, our medical carriers, about ten thousand dollars. And one way that we could use, there's, there's lots of strings attached to it. So, but, but one of the ways we could use is by bringing in consultants that can help support staff wellness. So we really pushed, um, so we brought on Stacy last year where she, she brought on was available to do session, pushing into faculty meetings and doing sessions on mindfulness and, and, and yoga. Focus on, on staff self-care, but as well, also the, the curriculum piece of how they can incorporate into their instruction, to help just teach these valuable skills to their students as well, or even pushing in and doing lessons. So we're, we're excited to partner with her once again. And again, like I said, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the district aims to improve the social and emotional wellness of students and staff with an emphasis on promoting emotional and physical wellness. The district would like to partner with the school, with school well and the qualified instructors in yoga and mindfulness in this endeavor. Through Yoga Core, continued direct instruction offered to students at LBHS during PE classes, well spaces at LBHS and, and support for yoga and mindfulness at TMS, El Moro and Top of the World. Direct instruction to students in, in, uh, mindfulness and yoga, uh, professional development, direct instruction to staff on mindfulness and yoga strategies. Human resources wellness, this, we talked about the, the, the supporting staff, our, our staff wellness initiatives. So again, the, the staff requests the board approve this contract agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Collin and Dr. Mary Berry for bringing this together. So any questions? If not, may I have a motion in a second? Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero to approve the independent contractor agreement with Stacy Beena. This takes us to ten D, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three LBSD special hourly rate of pay sheet. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on ten D?
Nothing on ten D.
Mr. Collin, the floor is yours again because I'm busy.
Thank you, President Normandin. So again, we have, um, we have this, our special hourly rate of pay sheet. Um, and this year, the following recommended changes are, are being asked for board approval. Of course, the, we have to be in alignment with California law. So the, uh, minimum wage, uh, for the student worker going from fourteen to fifteen. And then it, it does reflect which has already been board approved, the, the, the six percent salary increase for, uh, certificate staff. And then this one piece, knowing, and we're, there is a, there was a shortage of subs even before the pandemic. It's been exacerbated by, by the, by the pandemic. And we shared plenty of times last year where there was, it was, it was, uh, an interesting just getting through to being, being able to be properly stacked. And I was very happy to say we, we'd never had an issue. We always had, we never had a situation where classes weren't covered. But in analyzing the, the county data on, on what in other, other schools near us are, are, are charging for subs as well as the uniqueness of Laguna, that's not the easiest place to get to. So there, there's that piece which makes it a bit more difficult to, to be competitive. So by increasing the day-to-day rate from one fifty to one eighty, now I guess as a point of context, last year, we, we agreed to have it be one eighty, a day-to-day or a long-term sub. That was last year's rate. So the proposal this year is that one eighty for day-to-day and then increase the long-term rate, which is if you work in the same assignment covering a certificated position for ten days or more, you would get the two hundred and twenty, uh, rate pay. So again, it puts us more competitive than our, our, our surrounding districts. I'm sure they're going to be increasing their, their rates soon as well, but it's just, uh, it's a constant kind of game where you're trying to really get as many to, to come to us. So we're, we're, we're believe that these two increases will make us much more competitive when competing for the, the, the smaller pool of, of subs that are out there. And then looking at the, the classified sub rate of pay, um, as well as nutrition's, uh, assistant sub and the custodial maintenance sub, these rates have not increased in the last few years. And we always wanted to have them be slightly below where the step one in those positions would be. So by looking at that, we realized that we could, we could bump them up to make them, um, again, with, with, with the classified sub rate and the custodial, it's not a substantial increase. You'll see an increase with nutrition assistant. We, and we're gonna be doing an analysis this year of this department because it's see if, if we are how competitive we are with, with pay in that department because it is one of the, the lowest paid department in our, in our school district. So more work to be done in that area. But we feel these are, um, appropriate increases to keep them in alignment with just below what, if you're an employee to be making. So the staff, wishes for the board to approve these updates to the special hourly rate of pay sheet.
Thank you, Mr. Collin, for being proactive in your staff. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Turn your mic on, please.
Custodian and nutritional systems is really low. I mean, you're you're talking about going from twenty three sixty seven to twenty four dollars as far as for maintenance people, which are probably the lowest paid individuals in our system and probably.
Sure, but the the issue is we can't have the subs making more than an employee that comes to us on the on the first step. So we had to, it had to be just below where that is.
Adjust the first step.
Well, they're all, they all, this year, they all got six percent increases and they'll get, they're getting fifteen percent increases over the next three years. So that it will continue to, uh, sorry, yeah, sixteen, I apologize. So that will continue to grow. But again, it was, it was, we had to keep it just below what, we couldn't have ourselves making more than our employees.
But with the fifteen percent raise, then they'll be getting more so we can also raise the subs.
Yeah, we we look at these rates every single year. So we'll continue to evaluate.
After three years. It's five percent a year, five, six percent a year.
Mr. Conlon, are we still contracting out substitute services to the staffing agency? Or we anticipate that next year we'll fully be able to staff substitutes in-house?
That is the hope. I'll be bringing a contract to the board at the September, the early September meeting to have that contract in place just in case. I am seeing a need to to contract for nutrition subs. Because that's again, that's a, it's a difficult position to fill, partly because the positions are three to four hours a day. So it's it's it's, you know, the the pay is relatively low and and they're only working a smaller number of hours. So that's a different, so I'm knowing that we have a hole right now that we have yet to fill. It's at the high school that I'm contracting with that company and it'll be ratified at the September meeting to have someone in place for the for the start of school. So the high school kitchen's fully staffed. So but I don't, my goal is and hope is that our current sub pool, and we're continuing to recruit. We just had about thirty new subs brought on. We're doing a second recruitment again. The hope is that I want to see, you know, can our, can the current sub pool sustain the day to day needs? We use resident subs last year where they were two assigned to every single site. But I'm kind of holding back on that because again, it 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 doesn't allow us to have a true picture of, you know, the the typical sub pool where it calls out individuals. So I'm hoping to kind of get a sense for how well the traditional system works to fill those day to day needs. So we'll we'll continue to monitor that very closely because it's, it's critical that we have highly qualified individuals to cover, cover any vacancies.
Yeah, and I think in that substitute pool, having those highly qualified individuals also has a link to the professional development and the other days that teachers might desire and need to be out of the classroom for their own development. So the two are kind of linked. Anyhow, no other questions?
May I have a motion in a second? Was it Perry, was it Perry? Remember for a second. Okay. Okay, we ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero to approve the special hourly rate of pay sheet. This takes us to the next item, which is eleven A approval of data sharing and service agreement between the Foundation of California Colleges on behalf of the California College Guidance Initiative and Laguna Beach Unified School District. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on this?
And none received.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours. Clerk Osborne, can you turn off your mic?
Thank you. You know, bring this forward. This is an agreement they're bringing forward through instructional services with the with the California College Guidance Initiative, better known as CCGI. This is a nonprofit organization that works with California Department of Ed or created through the California Department of Ed for a lot of different purposes around college and career planning. For for us, especially helpful for students that are potentially applying to Cal State universities. One of the challenges in playing, playing a college in general can be challenging and complex. And there's different ways to apply to a Cal State, to a USC, to a private, to out of state, all places our kids go. What's especially valuable about CCGI and this agreement is that it allows students to automatically automatically populate their coursework into there. And so if you had students that applied to colleges where they're putting in all their courses and all their grades, there's a high, there's a good chance that it could be an error and it could take a long time. So this provides a lot of efficiency. There's some other things that we'll explore with this and later on in the meeting, we're bringing, we're bringing forward something with Naviance, which provides a lot of server services that do have some overlap. But this one specifically helps us with the Cal States and it's free. So we're bringing this forward for your approval.
Thank you. And I'm assuming, but I'm going to ask you, the data secured falls under all the regular ways we secured it. Any questions? May I have a motion? Second? All second. Are there? Good. Are there, are there any comments or discussion?
I just want to make a comment on this. You know, sometimes we run into this as a board with these legal mandates that come out. There's a new piece of compliance. We have to do X, Y, and Z to be compliant because of ed code. This actually seems like it has some student benefits to our compliance, so I was really pleased to see that. So thank you.
Definitely does, yeah.
Nothing is free, James.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero to approve the data sharing and service agreement between CCGI and LBSD. Brings us to eleven B approval of the agreement with Power School Group LLC for the Naviance platform for use for the LBHS and Thurston Middle School for twenty twenty to twenty three school year in amount not to exceed thirty thousand twenty five dollars. Clerk Osborne, have you received any blue cards for this public comment? Okay. Is it Dr. Keller or not Dr. Mayberry or is that?
Yes, for this, I want to bring for Dr. Keller, who's been working with our counseling team as we've expanded it, thanks to the board. And so he's going to share a little bit of the work he's been doing, and this has been part of the support for the expanded counseling and more personalized counseling services.
Thank you. Dr. Keller, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, President Norman, members of the board. I'm really excited to be with you tonight to have an opportunity to share some important updates and information, primarily focused on our secondary school counseling planning that was kicked off from a state grant called the A through G, the A through G completion grant. And although we have very high rates of A through G completion in our district, the the state has put forward over five hundred million dollars for districts across the state to improve programs and services, provide professional development to counseling teams and administrators and teachers and staff to support ever increasing rates. And primarily, our focus is going to be on students that don't traditionally have high rates of A through G completion. So throughout the winter and spring, we were able to get together with our site principals at Thurston and and Laguna Beach High School and our school counselor teams to really look at our data, look at our priorities for students. And what emerged out of those conversations was a real need around having more in person personalized one to one touch points with students. And so that, the purpose of that is multifold. The one is to is to provide a resource for students so they know that there's somebody that's an advocate for them, that knows their academic plan, that is able to support them with personal awareness and developing individual plans, not only during their schools, school time, but also in their life after high school. And this leads right into, and that and that priority really helped us to identify and decide that, you know, in order to do this work really effectively, we're going to need to add additional staff. And so that's how we initially decided to move forward. And thank you so much for the for the board support on that and our leadership support on that. We did retain two new counselors. We have four high school counselors now at Laguna Beach High School. We have three school counselors at Thurston Middle School. We have some of the lowest ratios of council, students to counselors in the, and I would say nationally, but but for sure in the state of California for any public school. So we're going to be able to really enhance our services for all students. And that's, and that's our priority and our goal is moving forward. And so over the summer, we were able to get together as I've I've helped to facilitate, but really it was the, it was the counselor driven work over the summer to focus on goals, actions and measures to improve their comprehensive counseling and guidance programs based on what the, their national association, their American School Counselor Association, Association's national model for school counseling programs. And so they were able to map out their whole school years, do vertical planning, and really think about the ways that they were going to achieve their goals of multiple touch points with students. And and they were thoughtful about integrating the Naviance technology that the high school had started this conversation. They revisited it, a really important conversation around what technology tools are going to be really instrumental for us to be able to help students understand what their 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 personal strengths are and what their high school map and plans could be for academic planning and a variety of different college and career research and planning tools. So Naviance will ultimately play a really important part in this comprehensive counseling and guidance program at the secondary level. I do want to share that what their framework is a, is a great framework for us to be thinking about. It's called the College Career and Life Readiness Tool, and it really focuses on these different elements. And so Laguna Beach High School had been exploring the Naviance platform. They they actually previously were consumers of that product, stopped using the product prior to two thousand seventeen. It was really an underutilized product and and there were some barriers to successful implementation through the school counseling and college and career ready, college and career center. And so over the past five years, Naviance has really grown their technology tools and integration with student information systems. And we believe right, right now that that based on our research and exploring the the product options, that it really does meet meet our needs and expectations around providing a really important tool for students, counselors working with students, and then of course, parents have access to that information as well. And students would, students and parents, well, students primarily would have access to that information post high school, which is really valuable for for life planning. So there are many rich features of the Naviance system. And and our proposed contract has more than eighteen hours of staff implementation training. All the features are locally customizable. They're able to meet our program goals. Two main areas that our counselors want to immediately explore are the strengths assessment for select grade levels and of course, the academic goal setting and planning, really mapping, mapping their academic plans. Naviance, by the way, is used by more than ten million students across the country and over thirteen thousand middle schools and high schools. So it really is a premier application for for academic and college and career planning. Additionally, we, counselors want to explore that career awareness knowledge with students and help them explore the world of work and successful transitions to life after high school. So these are a little bit small to read, hard to read on the screen, but but you have this information in front of you. But part of that outcome of of our summer planning and summer work and that vertical articulation we did with the counseling team, plus the addition of our of our site leaders, site administrators and our district leaders, we were able to really map out and look at our priorities for all grade levels. And there is a way more detailed plan that that this summary document does not articulate well, but this is a nice overview. In particular, in particular for the middle school, I'll highlight in seventh grade, we're going to be implementing what we're calling a five year plan, which is a specific academic plan that start will be mapped out in seventh grade. So students will learn about and really have a clear understanding what the A through G requirements, which we've come to understand that that's not always readily known as students register for high school. So they'll know that in seventh grade, so they're really prepared as they sit down in March of their eighth grade year for a really successful planning session with their their high school counselors as they transition to high school. And then in high school, the four year plan will be a really critical element. That's their academic map for, that's flexible. It can be adjusted based on personal preferences and interests. Be a really important tool, and we're going to continuously assess students' strengths and interests and how that maps on to college and career and life after high school. One, one critical element that we really were excited about is the, I'll highlight eleventh grade. There's a super match portion of the program that actually looks at the the students able to take their own academic profile and think about all what their their experiences that they'd be interested in potentially exploring in college. And it and it provides a really rich array of different opportunities that a student might want to explore. There's over, obviously, there's more than two thousand five hundred four year colleges and universities. There's over four thousand post secondary education options for students. This really helps students to get a customizable, personalized map for life after high school. So that's an overview of our school counseling work at the secondary level for the winter and the spring and summer. Obviously, there's a lot more work that went into that. And I appreciate all the partnership of of our high school administrators and our school counseling teams and our middle school administrator and school counseling teams. And I'm happy to recommend the Naviance platform for a new contract for twenty twenty two, twenty three. And I'm open to any questions.
Go ahead, Member Perry.
It it looks like a wonderful program in that it's really improved. My question is, do, is there a plan for students that don't end up really having a career goal or a college goal? Can that happen?
That's not an option. No, well, no, so in terms of, so every, you know, we we know that one of the most critical elements of future success is having goals. And so we also value balance and health and wellness. And so part of the personal exploration process where you might complete a strength survey or an interest inventory or a college or a career in interest inventory, part of that is just exploring at the initial stages, middle school. Through the collaborative process with a counselor or the College and Career Center, we're going to be developing explicit goals for students. That's as not an option not to have that. And if you don't want to go to college, well, there's many different career options that we would be supportive as well. So the purpose and underlying funding is that comes from the A through G grant. We just want to have students keep their options open as they walk across the stage and graduate from high school.
I love that. Hopefully, everybody will have a plan. It may change and it may change again and again.
Changes, we know, we know adults change careers five, five to eight times in their lives too.
They will have a plan.
Yes, thank you. Yes, agreed.
I looked at the Naviance demo, just the two minute overview of the platform to see how it actually looks and feels. Because I think parents only use something that's really easy and straightforward. And students definitely need something that's enticing to use. I really liked it. And I thought if there's a way to integrate our graduation requirements from middle school, and I'm sure we can find them on the website. However, if there's a tool that makes that easy to track and then put in some of your own goals or some of your own career, college aspirations and have that all on a platform, it looked really exciting. Question is just, how do we make sure that all students are using it? Because the ones that aren't the the go getters that maybe don't have those aspirations that weren't looking for this tool are precisely the ones that need to be using the tool.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so great question. And just like everybody will have a goal, everybody will be using Naviance. And so they do have particular a sequence planned. I mean, it's not going to be everybody week one, August twenty second. We have a particular rollout plan that we're working on with Naviance. And each of the counseling levels have determined appropriate focus grade level to making sure that they're onboarding students and parents at the same time. So it may be, it may take a few months initially, but over time, this is going to be something, a regularly used tool for all students.
Great, thank you. Are there any additional questions?
How long does the grant last?
The grant is two years. Thank you. Good question.
Any other questions?
Just sort of clear, our intention and then the budget out years will be to include the cost of these programs regardless of the grant. I think we all recognize that the grant really seeds the program for for us. Unlike other districts, we'll, we will budget for these extra costs and the out years and the multi year projections.
I move that we approve this. Thank you. And my comment, LBSD utilizing Naviance with fidelity as you're putting in place will save parents ten to fifteen thousand dollars for each child each time, you know, when they become a junior to get planning for them. And so this is a huge win back to taxpayers and parents as our kids graduate, not as well as the ones for go getters and the ones who aren't sure what they want to do or aren't looking for this or just in the moment, which we want them to do that as well, right? That's that balance. And so this is a mating tool, and there are fifteen million high school students and ten million of them are using it. So I'm glad we're joining back in on this. So disappointed when we get out of it, and I'm so glad. But if it wasn't working, you know, if it doesn't have fidelity, it's not working. So I'm really glad that's back in with fidelity and so very supportive. Any comments? Any other comments? Okay. Ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. They're not, they're here to observe this meeting. They're not, they're here to observe this meeting, unless I'm trying to explain things in more detail. Yeah. Yeah. So pay attention. You do get to vote. So this is two eleven C approval. Yeah. Approval of independent contractor agreement, Boys and Girls Club for of Laguna Beach to provide social facilitation and expand learning program services for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year in the amount not to exceed four hundred thousand, thirty-two thousand, four hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Clark Osborne, did you receive any public comment? And received. Okay. Doctor Mary Berry, the floor shows.
Thank you. We're thrilled to bring back contract with our agreement with Boys and Girls Club again this year as we've done the last nine years. Such a wonderful partner that we've had over the years. And so this this agreement includes a social facilitation program that we've done the whole time. That's now at all schools during lunches, during breaks for kids, during summer school. We were partnering with them and just a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful program. This is expanded to include our expanded learning opportunities program, which is new funded through the state. This is a program that the state moved forward with a large grant to all districts so that students that are by the state's definition of unduplicated, so that might be low-income English learners, homeless foster youth, that they have opportunity to be to have support and school and schooling type programs or learning programs for nine hours a day. So they would continue to, with this case, they continue it with to the Boys and Girls Club after school. And then they also have access to some camps in the summer as well. And so this cost here is what we we are planning for up to a hundred and potentially up to a hundred and twenty students that might participate. That would be more than we've ever had, but we have the setup if we get to that point with our, you know, be able to get this messaging out and that we have this additional support for families. So we're really excited to kind of bring this forward and have this expanded partnership with the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Doctor Mary. Are there any questions? May I have a motion? Any discussion, comments? Are you ready to vote? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero to approve the independent contract with Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach. Move this to twelve A consent calendar. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on twelve A?
Uh, yes, I have on HH.
Could the speaker come to the podium? Do you want to call who that is?
Yes. Kenzie, Kenzie McMillan, you may come up. And thank you for your patience in getting to HH.
Hello, my name is Kessany McMillan, and I wanted to speak out against giving more funding to education elements. I feel like the lady who presented earlier didn't really give us much information at all. I feel like she didn't say anything. As a mother of three children, I so far haven't been very impressed with where our funding has been going. I mean, what did we really get for a hundred and fifty, maybe more, if we get what the number is, a thousand of dollars from them? We don't even know, like, some of the facts haven't been disclosed about the, you know, data that was gathered. And so as someone who attended the presentation on the survey that was done conducted with students, first of all, found it alarming that they had our children first identify with their race and ethnicity and then connected to questions like, how respected do you feel by your teachers? And it was just a lot of kind of leading questions. And a lot of kids felt frustrated because some kids identify with many different races and ethnicities. I think a lot of the questions that they were asking were uncomfortable to children. And also, I feel like we didn't, well, I mean, the positive news that I feel like the lady should have shared with us that our children across the board were very happy to be in this district and all races and ethnicities. So if that is the case, if our children are happy and adjusted, why are we giving more funding to an organization that seems to have a lot of questionable ideas? For instance, under LBUSD overview of education elements, if you Google it, what comes up is this statistics percentages of inequality in our communities. It only focuses on three minority groups and compares it to white people. And then it goes on to say that the reason we have inequality in America is because of our seventy, our school board members being seventy-eight percent white and then I, teachers being eighty percent white. And they don't even get their statistic right across across the different information they share. Because this mountain of racism that you guys also uploaded says that we have a seventy percent white teaching force that is covert racism. And so my question is, if they can't even get their statistic right on their material and they're gathering information about our children and then we're not even allowed to see it, shouldn't they first of all be paying us for that information about our children? Why are we paying them? Why are we giving them money? What what is, she said absolutely nothing about what kind of work they've been doing with our teachers and our principals. She said, we tell teachers to help kids feel included. Wouldn't they be doing that anyways? Aren't our teachers inclusive and kind and wonderful? I mean, do you guys really believe that you are part of this seventy-eight percent white basis? Or, I mean, I don't believe that. I think you're wonderful people.
Thank you very much.
Need our money.
Clark Osborne, do you have any other blue cards for?
I'm no other comment cards received.
Okay. Thank you, Clark Osborne. Thank you to the speaker. Sorry, I'm in my spot. Do we, do any members wish to make a comment or ask a question on consent item? Not pull it for board discussion and separate vote, but just questioning or comment.
I have a couple of questions, but I'd also like to pull an item. My question is.
Can you tell us which items first so that we can, on which items, on which items so that we can all?
Yes. Q, Q, R, and S. The legal services.
And these are our questions for these three?
These are questions. Um, why isn't the Adelson, Atkinson, are we not using them anymore? Mark Breezy's group?
Their their contract wasn't up for renewal at this point in time. Only these three were. We had previously done that content. It's a media renewal. So the timing of all their contracts doesn't align, which is why they're not part of this grouping.
So so we have three legal contracts here. How how many legal groups do we have contracts with?
Would be four with these.
Oh, so they're the only other one. Okay, thank you. And then I had a question on Z. Why TOW and L moral minutes are different?
I'm sorry. So you have questions on Q, R, S, and C?
I have a different question on Z.
On Z. Okay. So are there any other items so that we can just mark them so we can open them and follow along besides Z?
That I have questions about?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay. And can you re-ask the question on Z? You want to know why the minutes are different?
Mm-hmm. Why are two elementary school minutes are different?
They're they're pretty, they're obviously, they're very close, right? And so the days don't exactly match up because they might have, depends on where their late start or open houses fall. So, right? So if you, if an open house fall potentially falls on a Wednesday or Thursday or Tuesday, it changes it slightly based on that, but otherwise the bell schedules are identical. There's just a slight difference that sometimes it's impacted if it's on a Wednesday or not, because Wednesdays are minimal days or early out days.
Okay. Makes sense.
Is there no more questions? Anyone else have any questions on any items? Okay. So before we vote on all the consent items as one action, does any member wish to pull a consent item for a separate public comment or discussion and vote?
Yes, I would like to pull item HH.
You want to pull HH? That's the only one. Okay.
President Norman in?
Yes.
This is not to pull an item.
Oh, do you have a question?
I have a question. Are we able to go back?
We can go back. Go ahead.
Okay. Is it possible, Mr. Dixon, to try and get the fourth legal services contract on a, not a mid-year? So we we look at all of our legal providers in sync?
So, yes, we we did back in February. So Atkinson will expire in twenty twenty-three. So as we come up to this next fiscal year, we'll try to get them all in June to get them all aligned. But that is always the goal to align the contracts with fiscal year renewals. Yes.
Yes. And if they are all providing the same service, it's great to look at them in one.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome, Clark Osborne. Okay. So then I need a motion to approve all consent items minus HH. Can I make it? Can I do? C through GG. Oh, because it's the last one. Thank you. Second? Okay. Okay. And all in favor? Opposed? Okay. So that motion carries five zero. Yes.
We should have done it at the beginning, I think.
She she did train, yeah. Yeah. So now they're just, now they're observing.
I just know some of this is confusing.
It'll take some time, but they have, they have Victoria Jason and presented, yep, go through every agenda with them. That's part of the interview process, too, is to find out if they really want to read every agenda. And they did. Okay. So now we're on to approve HH or to have, no, no, sorry, to have public comment about HH. Is there anyone else? Did you receive any other additional cards or is there anyone who wants to speak to HH?
It doesn't appear we have anybody wanting to speak to HH. No other comment cards were received.
Thank you, Clark Osborne. And so then, Member Perry, would you like to start a discussion or ask questions about H? Oh, I'm so sorry. We haven't, yes, I need a motion for HH. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now, Member Perry, would you like to ask the question or make comments about HH? Is there anything you'd like to say separately? Okay.
I I received some calls and concerns about education elements. And I know that the link did not work for a while for people to give comments. And one person I asked to let Dr. Dr. Valoria and Mrs. Weber know. And it was fixed, but it was later, you know, it was today, and people didn't have time to comment on that. So I think that wasn't exactly right, that people didn't have a good chance to comment on that. And a lot of the concern is about the.
Remember, Perry, people can always email us to make comment, too. They can email all of us and make comment, too.
Well, I'm just saying that parents said the link didn't work and they were trying to use the link because they thought that's what they should do.
I just meant you can inform them. They could email us.
Or? How many contacted you? Oh. No.
Didn't we receive written public comment, though?
We did. Okay.
And now it's.
We have, and we can, and we can receive emails anytime.
My understanding was that education elements, now, we've spent, I know we've spent over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. How much have we spent now with education elements? Somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred. I I thought after a year and a half's worth of work with the steering committee that our steering committee was going to be able to take this information and use it and share it with other teachers, and it would filter down to students. Like when a teacher goes to a conference or a speaker, you take that information in and then you bring it back and you try to embed it in your classroom. You don't bring the speaker back or the whole conference back. I I think that they did, you know, we have all this knowledge now. They've helped us. I think we should be able to take it from here. I don't think we should have to keep, keep paying them for more help in this area. I also, I saw that staff will be given choices about what what to go to at the in-service, but they don't really have a choice as far as what the in-services are. In this case, couldn't we have asked our classified and our certificated people what they thought would really help them with their jobs and their teaching? And if they had fifty thousand dollars, what would they want? Is there a specific speaker? Is there an area they'd like help in? We do that as well and.
Yeah, we we survey staff after all of our professional development, what works, what went well, how effective it was. And then, is there other things you'd like to do beyond this? Obviously, we have, you know, three hundred, you know, almost three hundred employees, I believe. And so we do our best to meet all of their needs and, you know, our surveys to them typically indicate that we are usually in the eighty percent mark, sometimes into the ninety percent mark, whether it's effective to them. We're always striving to get better, but we do always ask them for additional workshops or different needs that they need. That's what we're really excited about this Thursday coming up is that there's a lot of choice, right? So they pick what's best for them, you know, and without all those sessions are all based off of their previous feedback, not just from surveys, but also from like our grade-level lead meetings or site leadership meetings, department chair meetings where we're gathering that input. And then we've created a set of choices. Each teacher has next Thursday probably each of the one-hour sessions. It's anywhere from ten to fifteen different sessions they can choose from, like going to a professional conference, right? But now it's here instead of having to go away for it.
I thought that I remember at some meeting in the past that the sites all had a role in wanting this program to continue with the involvement of their teachers in making that decision. Am I right in that or did I make this up?
Well, item HH is specifically for professional learning. Education Elements has helped us with a lot of the equity work and 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 that we've done the last year and a half. But this one, they do a wide variety of things that they mentioned earlier. So like in this item, I mentioned some of the sessions that they're going to facilitate that teach have a choice around getting good feedback, impactful feedback, student engagement, differentiation, personalized learning, restorative practices, like a one-on-one, just understanding what it is. So this one, and then if there's follow-up sessions that we want to do later in the year with them, we're able to do that with this with this specific contract, and that's listed in HH.
Can you explain why staff can't do this? Why why we have to? I I see we're pulling in another consultant for eighteen thousand dollars. We're pulling in different ones. Why? Why after this much money and working with them for so long, can't staff do this?
Well, it's a good question. So for this, in the last couple of years, when we've done professional learning, it's really been connected to the pandemic, right? It's a lot about safety, masking, all these protocols, our intervention systems. And so what's different about next week is that we're able to give them a whole different set of options around learning that are directly connected, not only to their position, but their choice of interest, whether it's something they want to do immediately or that maybe they want to explore. So in doing that, if you want to provide something like that, that's a very personalized professional learning experience, you have to have a lot of options. And so in this case, we have sixty-plus sessions running on in one day, which is like a full-blown conference, right? So and we have, I'm facilitating three sessions myself. Dr. Canover is facilitating two sessions. Kelly Shear is facilitating two sessions. Mrs. Rojas is still getting three sessions. We have twenty-plus employees facilitating sessions, but it's just not enough. And what's been really helpful for this is that Educator Effectiveness Grant that we had, that the state gave, which was several hundred thousand dollars. This is, it's all funded through this. So it's set up to get that professional development to teachers in the in very personalized way. So we're hoping to be able to do this type of personalized wide variety of options for staff, you know, not only this Thursday, but as ongoing into the school year.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that you're giving sessions and other people are. It seems like like everybody who was on the steering committee could be giving a session on something.
Well, this this Thursday's not about the steering committee. This next Thursday is about all things and learning.
Be doing the education elements part of it.
There's no education, education elements is facilitating like lessons or sessions around academic learning, like high, like I mentioned here, high-quality feedback, student engagement, differentiation. That's different than the equity work that they've been helping and supporting and giving strategic planning for.
As a point of clarification, regards from a classified standpoint, we've been, the last several years that you had cheered up coming, wanting the employees wanting something relevant to their job description and then their classification. We really go our way to ensure that we have sessions specifically to to classifications. For instance, we had Yvonne Redard just last week do a entire session on on changing office into more more welcome environments. All site, everyone in an office, all all site clerical attended that. So that was specific just to them. We have sessions for our nutrition group with with Sodexo. We have the campus supervisors meeting by themselves with their admin. So that we've really got another way to make sure it is as close as relevant to their jobs, their their job position as possible. And that's always been our goal through through all the sessions. So it's something we always continue to work at. And we're kind of like, like Dr. Mayberry shared, we're constantly sharing, collecting feedback to continue to enhance and ensure that we are meeting the needs from a PD standpoint for our for our staff.
I I think there needs to be a balance of professionally-led sessions. We all know what it's like going to listen to a great speaker or going to a workshop that is facilitated at a top-notch level. And I think we need to have a balance of that. And then in-house offered things. Some of our facilitators in-house are probably top-notch. But, you know, we have to balance that with other outside experts and other expert facilitators and expert speakers because that is not a core strength or, you know, not every employee that might have some content knowledge would have that professional facilitation skills. So we know that the choice aspect is one of the key things that drives the learning. So if we want our our professional teaching staff and classified staff to get a lot out of it, they need all of those choices. I think as a board, we've set through some of the at Elements facilitated sessions, and they are expert facilitators at getting people to share, to volunteer, to work in groups with their markers and all of their stuff. And that takes a lot to put that together and do it well. So I think at this rate, I don't I don't have any problems with this. I did want to ask an important point of clarification. This contract at close to 50,000 is separate than the money that we will pay them to lead this work? Correct. Okay. So there is two separate contracts, one on PD, which is grant-funded, one on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is a follow-up to the past years. Gotcha. Just keeping it all straight.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Good point of clarification.
I I was very disappointed with the money and the time spent that it didn't trickle down to students. And I saw that I didn't look at it carefully because of the time that Dr. Valoria sent. It looks like there is quite a plan now that looks impressive, but it looks to me like something we could do ourselves. And not that we don't need other professionals coming in, but I'm not sure that they're the ones that should be coming in.
Are we ready to vote? Do I need to move the question? We're ready to vote. Okay. Okay. All in favor of consent item HH? Opposed? Okay. Motion carries four one for approval of HH. And this moves us to 13A governance section. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment on 13A?
No comments received.
I'm sorry. And it's the board discussion regarding BP 6153, school-sponsored field trips.
Yes, none received on 13A.
Thank you very much. And on this one, this was something that we had asked in the last two meetings, that we bring it back to have a discussion. And I, you know, whether it's an easy fix to align it. No, go ahead and report.
Yeah, I think, again, the out of the outcome of one of our last special meetings, there was a discussion on bringing this back for a discussion to get some direction from the board. It wasn't on the agenda. So you staff couldn't get specific direction. So really, it's it's an opportunity for the board to say, if we wish to edit Board Policy 6153, which is school-sponsored trips, to align with Assembly Bill 1887, which has a limitation on where travel restrictions for state-sponsored activities, then we're we can do that. I just, we need to do it in this session and not the last session because it wasn't agendaized that way. So we're staffer ready to get feedback. We can bring 6153 back if that was the interest of the board to edit that to align with that. Okay.
Dr. Valori, do we know how many states are included in that assembly bill? Like, how many states will we be restricting student athletes from traveling to?
It's over 20 at this point. Yeah, it it keeps going up. This would apply because the the only board policy we have, but we could, it would be any student trips. Correct. Correct. It's any student trips, M U N, all of those. Correct. Yeah.
Good clarification. Thank you.
It would be any school-sponsored activity that that we sign off on for, which obviously these would be overnight trips because no one's going to fly there and back in one day. But yeah, so that's 6153 has, there's an opportunity because it is approved that the board would not consider any trips that are in violation of Assembly Bill 1887, if that was the interest.
Well, we're just saying if we're if we're in agreement that we do that. Yeah. So I think that I would like to see what that looks like if you bring the policy back for first reading. Jim would. Is there anyone else? Mike.
Um, that I'm just concerned if we're looking at other organizations that plan things that our students might want to go to, that might benefit from going to, that they would, we would ask them to make every effort not to go to one scheduled in one of those states, but to not make it totally cut and dried that they cannot go.
Well, and that's what I think is a good option of that, the verbiage of that, and I want to just know.
I have a problem with that. As long as any any that are funded by the school district abide by the the state's restrictions. If people want to on their own, want to want to send their children someplace, I have no.
I mean, just like the one we just had, the football team, they're they're paying that. We're not paying that.
But they're representing or representing the school district.
So that would mean like, that's what I was saying about, whoops, not Model UN.
I think the Model UN would be in anyone that is 22.
I have a concern that we get.
They may have been in the past, but so I I think. Right. Sorry.
Well, I want to make sure that we prevent the situation that we were in over the summer, which is a group of students, advisor or coach that already has a plan. And then, you know, we're put in a position where we have to make a decision at the 11th hour. I think as a board, our policy should dictate the the direction that coaches and advisors and student groups take. And so, yeah, I think we need to bring it back to discuss it. What would be helpful to know is if out of those 22 states, there are longstanding student travel to any things, whether it's a annual volleyball tournament that takes place in Philin State or a Model UN, it would be really helpful for me as a board member to know whether we are really impacting well-established student activities, because that would be something that the board would definitely want to take under serious consideration as we, you know, as we did over the summer. But I think we need to get in front of this this topic and have all the information and make a good policy.
Is that nothing? And and I think if you bring it back, maybe even an option on the wording, if there's, well, we need to figure out if there's a big impact or not. You can determine that. Okay. This takes us to 14A. Approval of the superintendent's employment contract solely to extend the term for one year. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comments cards on 14A?
None received.
Thank you. On June 23rd, 2020, the board approved the superintendent's compensation increase, 6% salary increase for 2023 school year, 5% salary increase for the 2324, and 5% salary increase for the 2425 school year. That provision and the next are part of Dr. Flora's contract that was unanimously agreed that states, should the superintendent receive a satisfactory evaluation pursuant to this agreement, this agreement shall be extended for additional year. So we've agreed as a board, that's what we agreed to on contract. That's the legal obligation we have to our superintendent. On June 29th, 2022, the board held a special meeting to conduct superintendent's evaluation process. Upon completion of the evaluation, the superintendent was presented with a superior valuation. Per the agreement, the contract shall be extended for additional year. I request that we approve this contract, which is brought forward solely for the purpose of extending the contract for an additional year. Members, there should be no open, there should be no real open session questions on this item. However, if there are, I caution you to stay in the lane of open session that is clearly defined in law. If a member deviates from open session questions, I call upon my fellow members to move the question so the board does not violate the laws that govern us or our employees' legal rights. Lastly, I remind my colleagues, the board has evaluated the superintendent's amendment to his contract and is no longer subject for discussion or comment. And that any discussion or comment related to employee performance evaluation is required by law to take place only in closed session. The valuation part has been completed and is no longer subject for discussion or comment this evening. May I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Thank you. Are we ready to vote?
I have a question.
See, to align at the end, it's the staff request that you.
Oh, was it staff? Well, I think in governance, I think I think maybe that's the type of, it's us that requested.
Because I think that's very confusing. I couldn't understand which one of the staff requested this.
Well, they all really do. They want to keep them. Was I? Yeah, they all request. Yeah. Sorry, Mike. I didn't I didn't catch that one either. So.
I nominate Jim to write the item.
Me, too. Okay. Another question, Member Perry?
Yes. My question is, due to the provisions of the agreement, is this something that we are allowed to vote yes or no? Or do we have to vote yes?
A vote of no would be a violation to the agreement that you unanimously voted for when we created the agreement.
It wasn't unanimous.
It was when we created the agreement, it was unanimous. The contract, when we hired him, that was the contract. It was unanimous. I went back and looked at the vote. It was unanimous. That's the contract.
Okay, okay.
So if you want to amend that, that's a closed session.
So why are we doing this if we don't really have?
Because it's required by law.
No choice.
It's required by law.
Okay. And if if.
Because of the belt, what happened in the Bell, city of Bell, right? So now we have to do all this since 2017. It's required by law.
So am I allowed to abstain if I can't vote no?
I don't know the answer to that. So if you want to abstain, that's fine. Lawyer will tell me if we need to do something else afterwards. I don't I don't know the answer to that. I didn't ask him that. I'm assuming, I mean, I don't know, I can, if we have to bring it back for another vote because you can't, I can ask them. But but voting against it is violating his contract. Because we unanimously gave him a superior valuation, and that means we automatically give him another year. That's what's in his contract. Okay. He needs a second for moving the question. All in favor to vote now, which is what move the question is? Okay. So motion to move the question. Passed. For, it's not unanimous to move it. To call the question is unanimous to move. The question is not. Yeah. So you don't have to have a, you don't have to have a five oh. Right. That's all. Just super. Yeah. But I didn't, I didn't hear, Member Perry, were you opposed to moving the question?
No, I wasn't opposed to moving the question.
Okay. So it's unanimous, Pfizer. Okay. I was waiting to this. I was trying to answer your question before about it. Okay. Okay. So now, all in favor of approving superintendent's contract?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. So the contract, the motion passes four zero zero one or zero, because it's not, absolutely not accounted if everyone's here. Okay.
Based on some other recent things, I would like clarification on abstention.
And we, we.
Can you get?
Would you like me to do that? Okay. Yeah, we could do that. And we could bring that to governance or we bring that to policy. Perfect. Next meeting. Okay, perfect. Does that work? Okay, good. You went next next meeting. Okay. This moves us to 14B, Approval of Education Element Agreement for Equity Inclusion Strategies and Implementation Support. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment on this item? No. Thank you so much, Clark Osborne. As we reported, as was reported by Kristen, education elements during reports, all of our school sites have specific action plans. They are implementing throughout the 202223 school year. These plans were developed throughout the spring semester and presented to steering committee members in June, including both Jan and myself. It was determined by site staff that engaging with education elements for 2023 school year would support the ongoing work with the goal of updating our steering committee of progress on a regular basis. This contract will provide coaching and support to all of our site principals and equity team at each school site. Are there any questions before we have a motion? Okay. May I have? Thank you. A second? Thank you. Are there any comments or discussion before we vote?
I'll just comment that I would like to see us bring in someone else, another consultant for next year.
Say, I thought this was a pretty reasonable amount of money for everything that they wanted to provide for us because this also includes the workshop materials, the project management, and the travel cost. So I think this is a real steal.
And there are no elements.
I negotiated that one. Yes.
Dr. Valori, Dr. Mayberry, is there any grant funding on this type of work?
Yes. I mean, as it relates to the work that we can, when you look at all of the different grant funding that are available, and Mr. Dixon's going to be presenting a lot of the ending fund balances for those grant funds, we definitely can find an opportunity because it has direct impact on school climate and culture. There'll be an opportunity to utilize grant funding. And I think much of what you saw in in consent around professional development coming from grant funding, not from the general fund. So.
Yeah, that piece I'm clear on. It's just this year to work on the DEI.
For sure.
I'm curious whether it hits the general fund, you know, when we have public comment made like, oh, we've already spent $150,000. Well, it's one thing to spend money that's in our general fund that could have gone towards other things. It's another type of scenario to have grant funds that we're using that we didn't have anything else to spend them on because they were categorical, so to speak. So that's specific to this item. Do we anticipate grant funding?
I could just comment real briefly on that. In in cases, and it doesn't have to be specific to this, but because of a lot of the relief dollars, and I'm thinking specifically about the educator effectiveness, the $750,000 for professional development that was never planned for. So as we use those funds, a lot of these things that have been brought forward are things that we would have done otherwise. So what that's doing is freeing up general fund dollars that would have otherwise been spent on professional development that we wouldn't have planned for. So whether it's assigned to the grant fund itself, or it's being freed up to use general fund dollars to spend, either way, it's not having a fiscal impact that we would have otherwise seen because we got a lot of relief dollars we weren't planning on.
Thank you.
But just to ask, we we didn't have to use education elements. We could use somebody else that would cover some of the same topics or different topics that would qualify for the grant.
Correct. It's about the professional development.
Okay, we ready to vote?
This contract, though, is continuation on the work. So it is not quite the same.
I mean. Yeah, this is staff's recommendation to bring forward. Yeah.
Can I ask one further question? Looking forward to 2324, do we anticipate additional work with them? Or do we feel like the staff feel like this is wrapping up building our internal capacity to some of Member Perry's other questions that she's asked tonight?
I think if you look at the action plans and school side principles, I wouldn't want to kind of read ahead. But I think you can see a scale, much scaled down version this year of what the expectations around coaching would be. And I would expect that once that momentum continues, that I don't foresee a need to continue the coaching in that way. We definitely, I they will have capacity at that point after all the work that we've been doing to continue that work without the use of a consultant necessarily. But we'll have to make that determination at the end of the year. But I'm pretty confident. And I look in the audience, we have amazing staff administrators that are going to continue to lead this work. So I would say more than likely, we wouldn't need them to continue this work. But I wouldn't say we wouldn't need anybody potentially. It is helpful to have facilitator at times, especially in this type of work. But at this point, I just don't see the need.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Okay, motion carries four zero, four one, sorry, to approve the education element agreement. This takes us to item fifteen A, governance reporting and board reports. Clerk Osborne, we'll start with you. To the floor.
Thank you, President Normandin. I had three things I wanted to speak to. One was on the Green Schools Network kickoff that Mr. Dixon mentioned that happened in mid-August following the board resolution twenty-two oh four. I really liked the concept of immediate wins, like forming the Sustainability Task Force by September fourth. It looks like we're doing that or in the process of doing that. We still have many days before September first, so I look forward to maybe knowing if we formed it or still forming it. But long term, I just want to remind us that we are in that resolution as a board and a district trying to get to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty, and the year is just kind of ticked down already. And so at seven years, I really look at the expertise of a group like we've hired to lead us in the initial steps that we need to take to be able to to get there, because that's a long plan, but it takes a long time to get there. So that was my first comment. So thank you for that work. I wanted to thank Mr. Conlon for all the new staff that have brought up and brought on. It was really nice, President Norman, and to go around and meet everybody in that quick fifteen-minute break. I especially wanted to welcome Tessa. Thesa, thank you. I didn't, I didn't hear it when you first said it, so welcome and look forward to lots of long meetings with you. And last but not least, counseling. In the process of looking at Naviance and thinking about the work that we've done to add additional counselors, thanks to many people on the board, but especially the the at the request of Dr. Kelly over and over again. I I just want to point out, I think, I think it was Dr. Keller that mentioned California average of counselors to students, one to five hundred and twenty-seven in our state. So one counselor, five hundred and twenty-seven students. The recommendation out of the American Counselors Association is one to two hundred and fifty. And I remember looking that up when I was first interested in work on the board and wondering, how do you ever get there if the state average is double that? And that's really important, right? Kids that are in crisis or even kids that just need good counseling, need a counselor. You don't go to your English teacher for that. They've got papers to grade. So I asked Dr. Valora, where are we at now with these counselors being added? And we're at one to two hundred and twenty-four. So we're under the recommendation. We're already beating that, and we're half of what, you know, our state is facing. So I am so excited about what this can bring to our students over the next six years and beyond. But I just really wanted to thank all the people involved in making that happen. Thank you.
Good news. I, today was the kickoff for the CTE teachers, and their theme was under the sea, like the sea for CTE. And Dr. Weir was dressed as King, King Neptune with his Triton, and he was a really good, good sport about it. And there were sharks, sea stars, mermaids, jellyfish. Our aviation instructor resigned because we really need pilots, and he was offered so much money he couldn't refuse. I know some pilots, they're paying as much as three times what their wage would be. We were concerned because we have sixteen students, some of our students signed up for aviation, but luckily, he had a friend who's also a retired pilot, and he was being interviewed today. Looks very promising. And he's even been to see our aviation lab. And if he doesn't work out, I know somebody else, and Gila knows somebody else, too. So hopefully, it'll all happen for the students who are interested in becoming pilots. I said something about the onomatogge table, and I think it's really exciting, and I hope everybody gets to see that in action. I was lucky to take a class on that. And I attended the Medical Innovation Research and Entrepreneurship graduation. And that was amazing, the panel that those that evaluates the students' work is just remarkable. They have a patent attorney. They have a man that is an expert in TED Talks and really helps them with their presentations. They have, of course, medical people that are guiding them, an immunologist and so on. And they ask tough questions. The kids, the kids did pretty well. And, you know, it's a free program for students. The summer program was three weeks during the year. I believe it's, I believe it's nine weeks. And a couple of the projects, one I heard was on congenital heart disorders for young, and you know how you put a stint in, they've come up with a stint that expands so that you don't have to have as many operations. It expands as you grow. And another one was for pediatric epilepsy. So student, the the young kids could have a patch that gradually gave the dosage during the day, which was very exciting. And there, you know, they have the fifty thousand dollar microscopes that they get to use. So it's it's like toured the plant. They also have other classes, the university lab partners, like they have a one-day class on introduction to bio research, and it's two hundred and ten dollars, but half the kids go on scholarship. It can be free. So if kids have a financial need, they can go free. And what I would really impress me was one of the students didn't have a way to get there, so they paid for Uber to go get the student. And there are, so of the the one-day classes, there's one on stem cells and regenerative medicine. There's one on invisible hijackers and how viruses are used in biotech. And the kids get a lot of, of course, hands-on experience with vi- viruses and reagents. On Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, they're having a pitch-launch-bro demo day where people have an idea for a startup for life science. Come and last year, they had seventy people present, a hundred people watched. I think it'd be kind of exciting to watch. I also, just, you know, talking to teachers, I know some of the classrooms, like the classrooms at Elmore and first and second grade wing are not at all ready with no carpet, no walls, no, but I'm confident Ryan Zada will come through like he does at the, does at the end. I I know they're a little frustrated right now because they can't go in and get their classes ready, but you know, I think it'll all work out in the long run, and he'll come through, and the classes will be there by the time the kids come. Thanks.
You know, when you go back to school at the beginning of this new school year, they want to know, what did you do for the summer? I took field trips. I I'd never been to the girls' and boys' club, although I passed them for forty years. And so I've, I was, I wanted to see what they were doing there since we're partners with them, so I had a wonderful, wonderful time there and saw how it fits with what we're doing and how that money that we just proved will allow them to have full-time employees, that it was just great. I also went to the Aliso property, which Mrs. Vickers is responsible for, which is turned into senior housing, which I I always thought it was across from Aliso Beach, so I was looking for it down there. I didn't know it was where the Lutheran church is, Methodist church. And so it was really wonderful. If you've never seen what they did with the old school and and turning it into senior housing, it's spectacular. And to know that it was all ours at one time, and we're going to get it back for a dollar in twenty forty or something like that. Jeff has the dollar, I know. But but it was really something, it was something to see. I just, I've, I've, I've never seen them advertising these these facilities for any of our local residents.
That isn't how it works. That's why. It was supposed to. No, it wasn't. National Purport of America doesn't do it that way.
Well, that's too bad.
We can't be in discussion reports, I'm sorry.
Okay, I went to St. Catherine's, the St. Catherine's of Siena, the school that the city is thinking about purchasing, and I keep, I've been driving by there for years, and I'm like Ingrid Burtman in the belt, in Bell's name, Mary's, or one of them that, where she's always, she's always looking at this new building going up next door, and she's praying to God that they'll give it to her in her dilapidated school. So I've been praying that, you know, they would give us this building, or that we could buy this building and move our administration building there. But it was just really wonderful to see what's there and that the city or the city and us will have partnership with with that. Because I'd hate to see those six and a half acres go to developers. It's just a fabulous piece of property. It's scary in some ways because it was like Chernobyl, that they closed down one day because of COVID, and the books were all there. Everything was there like that they left. And and it also brought back my childhood, that in each classroom, there was a crucifix that I got to look at again. So it was, it was, you know, talk about scary education, that that was kind of fun. And then the the last part of my field trips was I went to go to the bus lot. And I passed the bus lot for years, and and so it was really great to go into the bus lot and see the batting cages and to see receiving, and we have wonderful properties that I'm sure that people would like to get their hands on or or give it to someone else, but we have to protect it all costs. So that's what I've been doing for the summer.
Thank for, thank you for that delightful report, member Vickers. Jim, can you turn off your mic and dang your zone?
Further comment of what Member Osborne said, we have made a commitment to, to counselors in this district for years, and there were some really lean times, and other districts were eliminating counselors and going to some makeshift storefront counseling, and we always maintained our commitment to having counseling, and now, in a sense, we're council-rich. So it's, it's really come full circle, and but it has always been a dedication of this district to recognize that need. I just, I know everyone is aware of this, but certainly the enrollment concerns are broad-based in schools across the country, and they're trying to figure out where post-pandemic, where the students have gone that aren't coming back, and for some districts, it's a real serious issue. And I I don't believe ours, you know, we already were looking at decline enrollment just for demographics. And so I think most of our students have returned. We always have ebb and flow. That's historic. But I think we're in good shape as far as that goes. The interesting piece of information I heard, which I thought was a little bit alarming, was that the younger generation gets a lot of their information that they base as concrete information from TikTok and Instagram. So, which might be one step worse than Wikipedia. Because that's, as the teachers, they, as they learn from their teachers, Wikipedia is not an authentic source. So I think, you know, we need to just keep our eyes open. Some of the things that may come out of those mouths may be totally false. Thank you for indulging that. The whim that is kind of, who would have thought?
As I say, there are, there are educational videos out there as well, so on the same platform, so. I'm a cute, I'm excited about the fact school's going to open up. I did the appropriate thing in summer. I went away and actually went on vacation and go on field trips. So I don't have any, I mean, outside of conversations, if I have nothing to report on, I appreciate everyone's reports and and all the, all the recognitions we did, and I'm so excited when you guys start to vote, and then school in September, and then back there, so. And that was, next item to Dr. Valora, superintendent report.
Just one quick one. We're waiting for a lot of the budget trailer language to get wrapped up, so there's a lot of stuff moving around law-wise at the site, state assembly and senate, so I hope to have an update to the board shortly, maybe early next week or late next week, depending. A lot of stuff didn't make it out of committee, so some of it's going to kind of die where it's at, which is typical processes. It happens where things, you think it's headed down the right pathway, and then all of a sudden, nope. It's politics at its finest, right? So there's still a lot to be determined around, for example, busing. There's still some language there that they're working through. There's still obviously issues related to TK and how that's being funded within LCFF, so that basic community-funded districts don't, don't receive those dollars. There's still not been a legislative fix for that. So again, lots up in the air still with the budget in terms of just the trailer language of how, how they're going to actually push the money out for some of these things that they're planning on doing. So we'll keep you apprised of that, but that's that's it. Well, I did mention, I think I mentioned the update. I'll be representing Laguna Beach in the Schools for Sound Finance, the small group that represents community-funded districts, so on the board, I was asked to be a member of that, so that's exciting, because it'll be fun to be a little more involved in advocating directly at the state legislative level on our behalf, so.
That's a nice job. With that, we're going to move to sixteen A. So the next regular scheduled meeting will be held in person here in this lovely Thurston Library. Next Thursday, or Thursday, September eighth, twenty twenty. And next is sixteen B, adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? A second, a second, okay. All in, well, as a reminder, BB ninety-two hundred, when we adjourn the board, is no longer seated, and thus we have no individual authority until we're seated again. All in favor? Opposed? I'm going to say me. I've always wanted to do that. Okay, so motion carries four one, just to mess with Victoria. Meeting's adjourned at eight forty-one PM. It's been a funny night.